I hereby call to order the regular meeting for the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, November 13th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
John Caesaretti. Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Allison Pathless.
Here.
Amy Peeling.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
Principal Jackie Brennan will introduce some Harper Dolphins to lead us in the pledge.
Good evening, I am Jackie Brennan, the principal at Harper Elementary School, and I am so incredibly honored to introduce some of my third and fourth grade student hope leaders. Before I do so, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Monica Brown, a Spanish teacher at Harper, who has done some incredible work with these student hope leaders.
Thank you, Jackie. I have the pleasure of working with these amazing student leaders that are helping to actualize the vision of District 39's Foundation's team. The Foundation's committee works to, excuse me, sorry, works to create an environment in which students feel safe and supported and encouraged. Each school's team currently is working to develop common language and expectations for their common areas within the school, and I am just so excited about the work that these students have done to bring this to life at Harper. I'm going to invite them right now to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about some of the work that they've done.
Hi, my name is Ollie, I'm a third grader at Harper School, part of Hope Team.
Hi, my name is James, and I'm a third grader, part of Hope Team.
Hi, my name is Hudson, I'm a third grader, part of Hope Team.
Hi, I'm Emily, and I help with this program, Hope Team.
Hi, I'm Ainsley, and I'm part of the fourth grade Hope Team.
Hi, I'm Jack, I'm part of the fourth grade Hope Team.
Hi, I'm Tommy, I'm part of the fourth grade Hope Team.
I'm Declan, I'm part of the fourth grade Hope Team.
I'm Clara, I'm part of the fourth grade Student Hope Team.
Hi, I'm Sophia, I'm part of the fourth grade Hope Team.
Hi, I'm Chase, I'm a part of the third grade Hope Team.
Hi, I'm Bronwyn, I'm a part of the third grade Hope Team.
Hi, I'm David, I'm also part of the third grade Hope Team. Hope stands for Help Organize a Positive Environment.
We work together to teach other Harper students how to be respectful, responsible, and safe at school.
We have some exciting work planned.
Recently, we taught and modeled appropriate use for recess equipment to kindergarten students at Harper.
We are currently working on creating rules and video lessons for playing with snow at recess.
Next, we will be developing a plan and lessons for recycling program in the Harper Cafeteria.
We love being a part of this team that helps to make Harper a better place.
Will you please stand and join us for the pledge?
I want to thank all of you so much for being here and for telling us about your program. I can tell you that you are doing really important work, and the leadership you're showing in your school gives all of us hope for the future, that we are so lucky to have leaders like you and to have you in our schools. So right now, if you'll get in a little line over here, I'm going to hand you a little special something, and then you can go out that door and meet your parents in the lobby. You all did a fantastic job, parents should be very proud. Okay, I request a motion to adjourn to the public hearing on the 2023 tax levy.
Motion to move to adjourn to the public hearing on the 2023 tax levy.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Yes.
John Caesaretti. Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Peeling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
Motion carries by roll call vote, and we are now adjourned to the public hearing. We have the 2023 tax levy. Dr. Kremis-Culley.
Thank you, it's my privilege to introduce Cory Boltemeyer, who will review with the board again the tax levy information.
All right, so tonight's the last step in our 2023 tax levy approval process. I'm just going to, since we've talked about this a couple times in October, in more detail, I'm just going to highlight at a higher level what we're asking the board to approve later this evening. So, a couple of key highlights, like I said, tonight's the approval night, nice board meeting. The applicable CPI percentage for this tax levy is 5%. For the calendar year that was applicable to this tax levy, it was 6.5%, but we're capped at 5%. And then the new growth estimate is 15.5 million, which is our 10-year average. So, in going through our estimating process for the 2023 tax levy, we're estimating the rate to be 2.987%. We do this by taking last year's extension, increasing it by the 5%, and then we take the total EAV and subtract out the value of the new growth to come up with this estimated 2.987% rate. One thing to keep in mind as we think about it is, you know, you've got the CPI, you've got the new growth, what we would expect if all other factors were held equal is that the typical existing taxpayers' bill would go up about 5% for their D-39 portion. Our next slide highlights the value of new property growth and why we find that valuable each year. The first column shows what would happen as we look from top to bottom. If we just captured CPI of 5%, if we go to the bottom half of the page, we'd be looking at collecting about 64.55 million, no new growth involved. Go to the middle column, same scenario, plus 15.5 million in new growth, yields an extra 462,000, that's roughly what our 10-year average would be looking like. But since our process is a little unclear as far as knowing the new growth ahead of time, we balloon our levy to make sure we can capture all that new growth. So that's what our far-right column is, that's where we'll be asking the board to approve later this evening, the $66 million levy request. That would represent 7.4% higher than last year's actual extension. Our next slide shows three columns, the 2022 tax extension, 61.47 million operating extension. Down below, you see the SB 508 adjustment, 435, and in our debt service line item. Those two items are added at the county level, does not require board action. Then the middle column is what we're estimating the 2023 extension to come in at, based upon a 15.5 million new growth value. And then our far-right column is our tax levy request by our levy area, 66.0 million. And you can see on the right, 5% of that request is for the CPI, and then 2.4% for new growth. And then the last thing in our presentation is just highlighting as part of our annual requirements, picking a month and showing what our cash balances were at the end of that month. So we've chosen July 2023, we've listed by fund what our cash balances were at the end of that month, that was 46.7 million. And that is all I have leading into our board approval this evening.
Board members, do we have any questions or comments on the levy presentation? Okay. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board regarding the tax levy presentation. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? Having no further business, I request a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
I move to adjourn to the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti. Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Peeling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. Motion carries by roll call vote, and we are now adjourned to the regular meeting. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the October 23rd, 2023 Board of Education Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the October 23rd, 2023 Board of Education Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Peeling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. The motion carries by roll call vote. This is now an opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? Oh, hang on a second, sorry. Sorry, so, remind, sorry, I'm reminding you to state your name and community of residence. By board directive, you are allowed three minutes to address the board, and this is also a reminder that this is not, sorry, that this is a time for public comment for members of the audience to address the board. It is not a question-and-answer period. Questions posed will be followed up by the district administration, and if you run out of the three minutes, there are a couple options you have. One is to send us an email with the rest of your comments, or if you wait until the other public comment part at the end of the meeting, you get another minute. Okay?
Great, thank you. Hi, everybody, my name is Karius Basto, thanks for being here today, and I just want to say I'm a newer resident to Willmet, two years, but this is the first year that we've been taking advantage of the great public school system that's in place, and I acknowledge that's a lot of the work and focus that this group has had, so thank you for that. Perhaps many of you read my email earlier today, and I just like to provide context and hold transparency and be able to just not, to address questions in advance. But my question is largely representative of kind of what's going on with the KEEP program, specifically twofold. I know there's a lot that has been shared and circulated, and I've kind of, even though we've only been here two years, I always say I talk to everybody, I like to give people's opinions, and understand where people are at with this. And like myself, many people, I think real, at first thought kind of the cost of the KEEP program in Willmet was just sort of the cost of doing business over here in the North Shore, when it was a lot more transparent over the discrepancy between what the tuition is for Willmet versus other neighboring districts, that's kind of when I took an interest towards it, and really tried to educate myself more on the principles behind it and kind of the reasons why. So my first question is, and I know this is getting addressed pretty directly, and I've heard positive things about that, is, would love transparency over where the things are going for next year, and I understand there's going to be a vote. I think in December, there's a lot of parents that are planning to be here to show support for that. And then the second question is, over the past two years, my understanding, and if this is incorrect, I'd love to understand that as well, is that the program grossed more than it was necessary to actually run the KEEP program. So that means kind of a subset of parents from this past year, or last year and this current year, my understanding, are kind of funding a surplus potentially for the program. And the ask is, by behalf of myself and others and within the K community that have paid this, is like, where is that going? And if there is a surplus, and if it's being allocated anywhere, how is it, how would that be, quite frankly, fair across the larger spectrum of the entire city, if this is where the, if a full-time program is where we're heading? I think that's kind of separate. If we're heading towards a full-time program, I think that's one thing, but not being able to, right now, if we're currently operating in a surplus, why is that? So, that's pretty much sums up my questions, comments, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other members of the audience who wish to address the board? I guess we're moving on to board reports. We have our committee reports, there is no facility development committee report for this month. School finance, our school finance chair, Mr. Caesaretti, is not here, so I will give this report. The board has agreed to annually review the KEEP 39 financials and consider adjustments to the fees and programming structures. Currently, D-39 offers a half-day academic kindergarten program with an optional fee-based enrichment program. Fees collected help to offset the operational costs of the program, including personnel and consumable materials, as well as the capital investments that were made for construction to be able to offer the enrichment program on-site. Fees for the 2023-2024 year are set at $6,460, an amount comparable to similar kindergarten enrichment programs within the community at the time of the program's inception in the 2020-2021 school year. Fees have remained flat for the four years the program has been operating. Mr. Boltemeyer, at our Committee of the Whole Meeting, reviewed the revenues and expenditures to date for the program. The board discussed financials as they currently stand in terms of revenues, expenditures, and capital investment payback, and considered options for the upcoming school years. The board may choose to increase fees, as it does with most optional fee-based programs, maybe at a rate of CPI. The board could maintain the fees as flat for the program, as it has done in the past four years, at $6,460, or begin to reduce fees based on some considerations of costs or a desire to begin subsidizing portions of the costs. Food, service, and transportation are not required services but are provided as an optional convenience for families and are partially subsidized by the district. The board may choose to subsidize a portion of the KEEP 39 fees. The board discussed options at the Committee of the Whole Meeting and potential scenarios that they would like to consider. The Illinois State Board of Education, ISB, has dictated that all Illinois school districts must offer a full-day kindergarten option by 2027-2028 school year. Thus, the district must prepare to offer full-day kindergarten program by 2027. Now that the new legislation requires every school district to offer a full-day kindergarten program as well as a half-day kindergarten program, the question is when to implement these programs. The first consideration is to map out enrichment program fees until a full-day kindergarten program is implemented. Once a full-day kindergarten program is implemented, then the kindergarten fees would be assessed as they are done for grades one through three, or sorry, grades one through eight programs. Members reviewed and discussed a variety of options and directed the administration to provide several scenarios for fees, as well as the eventual implementation of a full-day kindergarten program. Members also requested further detail regarding participation in transportation and lunch programs. These scenarios and additional information will be reviewed at the December Committee of the Whole Meeting. Next, we have the Strategy Committee report, Mrs. Schneider-Fabes.
So, the Strategy Committee also met on November 6th as part of the Committee of the Whole. We had an incredibly informative presentation by Principal Kelly Jackson, where she reviewed the FEL data collected for this year, and led a discussion with the board regarding findings and recommendations.
All right, moving on to liaison reports. The Community, sorry, Community Review Committee, or CRC, I believe, is meeting tomorrow. Does that sound right? Mrs. Pathless, are you going to that?
I am, yes, tomorrow.
We will look forward to your report in December.
Okay.
The Educational Foundation, Mrs. Pathless.
Thank you. The D-39 Education Foundation held a meeting on November 8th of 2023, and after meeting, the Ed Foundation awarded two GRIP grants totaling over $5,000. One grant was for communication boards at Ramona, and the second was for spring rise instruments at High Press. The Ed Foundation also hosted a successful trivia night, which took place on November 4th. I hear there were more than 130 people there, so, all of those signing. The next fundraising event will be the college paddle night on January 27th.
Thank you. The Willmet Village Intergovernmental Cooperation Working Group, Mrs. Kim and Mrs. Schneider-Fabes.
Thank you. So, the Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee met on October 25th, and the consulting group that agreed to sort of spearhead a lot of the data gathering was working over the summer with a group of mental health providers, and they kind of did a presentation on their findings and thinking about next steps. And I think that, at our next meeting, which is going to be in December, we are not only going to get an update from the sustainability coordinator that we hired last year, that all of the agencies hired together, but we will discuss our options and then next steps. I think that that's kind of where we're going with that. Also, the Family Service Center awarded the Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee with its Heart of the Family Award for its work on mental health this year. Committee was recognized at a lunch on November 2nd.
Thank you. Willmet Community Special Education Agreement, or WICSE, Mrs. Peeling.
Yes, WICSE met today, earlier this afternoon, and discussed upcoming summer school, and also approved the revenue and expenditures for this fall.
Thank you. IASB, Mrs. Pathless.
Yes, the IASB Joint Annual Conference is this week, November 16th through the 19th in Chicago, it's their 90th year, and I believe a number of us are attending, so we will be there. I will also be there and voting on behalf of the board at the delegate assembly on the five IASB resolutions.
Thank you. Moving on to legislative update, Mrs. Pathless.
Again, the Illinois General Assembly met for its veto session on October 24th through the 26th, and again, on November 7th through the 9th. Quickly, to note, two bills that passed both houses and were sent to the governor. The first was SB 1988, which shortens the time to appeal property taxes with the Cook County Assessor from 35 business days to 30. The second one is HB 2104, which passed both houses and gives school districts the ability to teach water safety in grades pre-K through 6, that has been sent to the governor. There were other hot topics that were discussed, but nothing was passed and sent to the governor. Those included the Invest in Kids Tax Credit, which is set to sunset in January 1st of 2024, and other bills about minimum teacher salary, religious dietary foods, firearm bill related to safety of storage of those at home, and self-medicating lactose intolerant. What was the last word? Lactose intolerant. Self-medicating lactose intolerant, so that children, I believe, who are at school can give themselves whatever they need to deal with being lactose intolerant. And then, a final quick thing is that EdRed is continuing to have conversations with legislatures, with legislators, yes, about the proposal that we discussed about requiring schools to be pulling classes or not requiring them. Something that will come up in January.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We are moving on to information items, Dr. Kremis-Culley.
Thank you, I just have a few updates for the board, but starting with written communications, the board has received written communications from Barbara Boran, Amy Wheel, Cory Lester, Jenna Griffin, and Karius Basto, Espasto, thank you, regarding KEEP 39 fees. In terms of administrative announcements, we have fall conferences coming up and then fall break. We're really looking forward to hosting our fall conferences at the end of this week, November 15th through the 17th. And in advance, we thank our parents for taking the time to sign up and participate in these important parent-teacher conferences. We know that our teachers and administrators, all of our staff, put a lot of time and energy into these conferences as well, and so we thank everyone for their efforts to connect and to partner with each other in support of our children. Following those conferences, the district will enter into fall break for the week of November 20th through the 24th. We will welcome our students back to school on November 27th. And just as a side note, as you all know, we collaborate among the township quite regularly, and at our recent superintendent's meeting, we were talking about and comparing calendars. Again, that's something that happens a lot these days. We tend to align with major holiday breaks, meaning the start and end of the school year, and winter break and spring break, but not always around parent-teacher conferences, and we've received some feedback, and so has Nutria, that sometimes that can be challenging for our families. So, I just want to share to the board, but also to the community, that that's something that we're working on. In comparing calendars this year, we did recognize that all of the elementary schools are non-attendance days for the entirety of next week, ourselves included. Some use it for parent-teacher conferences, some for professional development, and some as a trade-off for other days. And Nutria happens to, this year, be in session Monday through Wednesday, and so some of our families are finding that difficult. So, it is something that we're working on, and I think Nutria will be looking at that as well. They have a calendar committee that takes into account a lot of feedback from their staff, so adjusting that calendar is always something that's challenging, but I do want everyone to know that it is something we collaborate around, and we really do our best because we recognize that that can be impactful for our families. But there's a lot of competing interests as well, so please know that that is something we do collaborate around. Next, School Board Members Day is November 15th, and there's a proclamation that's in the agenda, but as November 15th is proclaimed as School Board Members Day, this is our opportunity to honor our citizens who devote their time and energy for the successful education of our children and our future leaders. And it is certainly very true for our members of the board, we're very grateful for your service to our community in support of our goals and our mission, and we just really want to sincerely thank all of you. So we have a little chocolate bar, just a little something to let you know that we appreciate you being conductors of our symphony with such great care and concern and expertise, and so thank you for all of your service. And then we have Property Tax Assessment Appeals. District 39 received two PTAB notices. Information regarding the potential liability of these appeals has been prepared for the board. And in terms of Freedom of Information Act requests, we've received and processed a couple. One is a commercial FOIA request from Smart Procure requesting current staff and employee contact information, and the second from Jody Cohen and Jennifer Smith Richards of ProPublica submitted a narrowed FOIA request for placement agreements and contracts with Shrub Oak International School. All records detailing negotiated per diem rates for tuition, room, and board and other services. All records approving requests for emergency placement at the facility, including proof of need for placement provided by the district to the Illinois State Board of Education. And with that, we can move on to annual business. As part of our annual business, this is our meeting where we look at long-term enrollment projections. The board will recall at our last meeting, we looked at current enrollment, and so this is an opportunity for us to update you on our projections, and we always invite Tony DeMonte to share this report with our Board of Education. Thank you, Tony.
Sure. I'm going to show you some charts, the charts are the same as in your board packet, and we'll go through them together. The first chart shows the overall trend of district enrollment. We're down about 11% from 10 years ago in 2013. For more detail on historical enrollment, you can reference the Fall Enrollment Report from October 23rd. This chart shows the number of students living in rented properties. The total number of students living in rental units in 2023 is 191, which is the same as last year, and remains the lowest number in recent years. Although some of this drop in recent years could be attributed to lower overall enrollment, there has been a noted multi-year decline of residential rentals coinciding with a record-breaking housing market. We also check home sales and their value. Home values continue to increase with the drop in sales over the last few years. I suspect there could be a relationship between increasing home values and the reduction of students in rental units. There are a couple developments to keep an eye on that are not one-to-one single-family home re... home replacements. 2010 Central Avenue has over 100 rental dwelling units. We talked about this a year ago. What's interesting is, to date, there are 56% moved in and resulted in no students in our schools as of the time of this report. It was not marketed toward older residents. It just so how happened that way. From the same developer, 721 to 739 Green Bay Road, the former Imperial Motor Site, once built, will have 150 dwelling units. A year ago, I talked about some developing conversations, renewed conversations about 14 units of townhomes that were going in west of the public library, but there's been no recent discussion on that. One was a vacant lot, and the other was to be a tear-down, and there were going to be 14 units. That likely would have resulted in some students to us, but that conversation has not continued. Other multifamily or unit developments will be marketed towards seniors and not families with school-aged children. An example of that is 1010 Central Avenue, the old Masonic Temple. Another interesting piece of information I learned from the village is that there are typically about one to three properties a year that are torn down without a new home being built for use of the yard, let's say. The next chart shows building permits for new residential construction. These have been decreasing in recent years. We keep an eye on kindergarten enrollment, which is expected to increase. You may recall, a year ago, we were expected to see a large jump at McKenzie and Central in particular. That ties back to birth rates, but we'll talk about that here. In addition to offering KEEP 39, the number of births have generally trended higher, and as such, a higher kindergarten enrollment rate is projected for the next couple of years, so that is still being predicted. When we begin our full-day kindergarten programming, we could see a slight increase there, too, as historically, we've had about 30 students or so, fewer students in kindergarten compared to first grade. So we may capture some of those students who may have gone to another kindergarten program, full-day program, or who chose to stay home. By the way, this chart here, if you take a look, that top red line, that's the kindergarten enrollment, and you'll see 2022, 2023, how that kind of upticks. And that line below were birth rates from five years ago. So birth rates really are, you can see those trend lines, they follow, well, the birth rate is what it is, kindergarten is what it is, but the both of them follow a very similar trajectory when you take a look at that. So birth rates really are a strong predictor of our kindergarten enrollment here in Willmet. So here are the school slides, which you may have taken a look at. Again, these can vary year to year. So there's Harper, Ramona, McKenzie, Central, Highcrest, Willmet Junior High School. Over the next five years, our elementary school enrollment is projected to increase very slightly. Highcrest Middle School and Willmet Junior High School enrollment is projected to be relatively stable with a very slight decline. The net effect is a similar number of students as we have now. We've talked about this in recent years, where we don't have a lot of large developments going in. We have families that move in, that move out. That's generally what we see. And the last paragraph of my report, which I really won't go over in detail, but I decided to add two additional data points for you, because I've talked about the McKibben demographic report that Nutria did, that we got some data back from. And then in 2018, we were handed a report by Dr. Casarda that talked about our future, and that one was really, really interesting, because that was five years ago, but ended up being pretty accurate as far as where we are now. But when you triangulate that data and look at the Barriger Systems that we use right now, who provides us the data, you look at the McKibben, you look at the Casarda, they're all saying the same thing, which is in a couple of years, one to two years, we'll stabilize and we'll just continue that trajectory. We're not going to swing up, swing down, no large swings here at District 39. Are there any questions from anyone around the table?
Board members, any questions, comments?
Appreciation. It's so helpful.
Yeah, it's really interesting. Actually, the, and we look at this yearly, as you know, some districts, every five or six years, they do a full-blown demographic hire and report. But what's interesting to me is those really large developments by downtown are netting zero students. Here, we were concerned a little bit for McKenzie in particular, who already has fairly high enrollments and what that would do to them, and when we saw that it net zero, it bored me. And I did speak to the sales office there, and they have no answer why that is. They said they're not targeting a certain demographic. Any other questions?
No, thank you. I thought it was very interesting, too, because I think people feel as if so many young families moved to the suburbs after COVID or during COVID, and that we would maybe see enrollment rates going up because of that, but it's not the case. There are a lot of new families, but, you know, they're just replacing families.
You know, we're replacing families. I mean, we have a couple interesting things going on to kind of paint the big picture. Home values increasing, rentals decreasing, usually renters, rentals are associated with larger families. You know, you combine all that with fewer residential permits, so people, they're just generally staying in their homes. Homes aren't selling here. And, yeah, new families moving in, current families moving out. It's that, we've always talked about that, and it's holding true. And then three different projections, all saying the same thing. I mean, if anyone, this is as close to a crystal ball as you'll get, so we're stable.
Yes, I will echo the thanks. Thank you.
Sure.
So I think we're up to board policy review. Dr. Kremis Kolee.
I will let Dr. Goackey speak to this. Thank you. There were no suggested revisions last month, so the policy is in front of you at this meeting.
Board members, any comments, suggestions about the policies? Okay. This is another opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? Then we will continue with our agenda. We have action items. We have, the next order of business is the consent agenda. Are there any items the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Mrs. Hart, please proceed with the motions.
Motion to approve the Personnel Report dated November 13th, 2023. Motion to approve a second and final reading of Board of Education Policy's 5:80 Court Duty, 5:125 Acceptable Use of Technology, 5:170 Copyright, 5:180 Temporary Illness or Temporary Incapacity, 5:185 Family Medical Leave Act, and 5:270 Employment at Will. Motion to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between October 24th, 2023 and November 13th, 2023 in the following amounts. Educational Fund: $346,076.66. O&amp;M Fund: $77,207. Capital Projects: $893,642.92. For a total, all funds: $1,612,768.64. Motion to approve the manual checks issued between October 24th, 2023 and November 13th, 2023 in the following amounts. Educational Fund: $134,548.54. O&amp;M Fund: $83,362.36. Transportation: $824.4. Capital Projects: $12,450. For a total, all funds: $231,184.94.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carries by roll, call, vote. I seek a motion to adopt the 2023 tax levy.
Motion to approve the 2023 tax levy and accompanying resolutions contained herein for the requested amounts that can be summarized as follows. Operations and maintenance: $9,638,046. Transportation: $901,908. Working cash: $42,000. IMRF: $196,739. Social Security: $1,640,236. Tort immunity: $740,538. Special education: $504,008. For a total aggregate levy of $66,29,454.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabes?
Yes.
And Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carries by roll, call, vote. We are moving on to conference items. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Is there any good in welfare?
Mrs. Kim?
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Ed Foundation for all of the work that they put into, well, all year round, but especially for Trivia Night, which I was able to attend. There was so much work that was put in, and there were so many volunteers also that night, and they made the whole event run really smoothly, and it was just really amazing. I mean, I watched them clean, because I was like busy chit-chatting and having fun, and like, they were like, you know, little busy bees, and they just like, I don't know, they took care of everything, and it was really wonderful. But I was, yeah, so I was very excited to be there and to raise money for such an important cause.
Thank you. Any other good in welfare? Okay. I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education, individual student matters, and specific personnel.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education. Specific student matters and personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carries by roll, call, vote, and we are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 7:44 PM.